All this meeting to order.
I'd like to make a motion for the conference participation for Jay Brown to participate in my conference.
Wait a second, um, do we need to do a roll call for that?
Yes.
Alright, a roll call please.
Mr. Campbell.
Yeah.
Ms. Williams. Mr. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Hardwick. Mr. Robinson.
Wow.
Mr. Pierce. Mr. Holdred.
Hi. Alright, thank you. Uh, review and adopt, uh, is Jay, Mr. Brown on right now?
With the roll call, can, yeah, alright, uh, could we do a roll call for tonight's attendance?
Ms. Williams. Mr. Rhodes.
Here.
Mr. Hardwick.
Here.
Mr. Robinson.
Yeah.
Mr. Pierce.
Here.
Mr. Holderide.
Here.
Mr. Campbell.
Yeah.
Mr. Brown.
You gotta unclip this mute. You. Set him up.
He cannot, he cannot unmute himself.
I'm here, sorry.
Thank you, Jeff. Alright, um, next we'll do review and adoption of, uh, meeting agenda.
Second.
Good second. Alright, um, roll call vote.
That's second, can I ask one question?
Yeah.
I didn't see on the agenda, um, this is, uh, the RKG final report payment, I mean, that's been hanging for two months. Are we gonna address that tonight? Or was it?
It's, uh, I think it's been paid. We're, I was gonna go over the treasurer's report.
Okay, yeah.
Where we're at.
Alright. Alright, I think, um, Mr. Brown, were we gonna collectively as a group review the final report?
Uh, I mean, I, I was under the impression that we did that at our last meeting to at least some extent. Um, I don't know, have we been invoiced yet for that report?
I have not seen the invoice, but I'm looking at our budget lines and it looks like we've paid it.
Okay.
Okay.
I guess we can, would, would you like to make a, make a note to the agenda to bring RKG back up in more detail?
No, it's been paid, it's, I, that was my question, the invoice, I know, I thought at the last meeting we were discussing what to do about it, but it's been paid, it's been paid, that's fine. I mean, like the record shows, it's been paid.
And we'll check on that, let's verify. Uh, so next is, we do, we do a roll call on the meeting agenda.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes.
Here.
Mr. Hardwick. Mr. Robinson.
Ah.
Mr. Pierce. Mr. Holdred.
Hi.
Mr. Campbell.
Hi.
Ms. Williams. Mr. Brown.
Hi.
Excellent, moving on. Um, treasurer's report, uh, current budget overview, Mr. Hodgins.
Good evening. I will just take you down line by line of where you're at in budget so far. Um, for professional services, a total of thirty-five, seven fifty was budgeted. Um, of that, twenty-five, seven fifty was budgeted towards the final phase of RKG. Um, and there remains ninety-five, thirty in that account. So, of the ten thousand that was not for RKG, you have ninety-five, thirty. And I believe the other expenses that came between ten and ninety-five, thirty were the farmer's market, the, uh, portages. Um, EDA membership, that's really a county economic line that's in the, in this budget. Five thousand has not been spent because that's for the MPA, the Regional Economic Development, uh, group, and they're, they haven't met in a very long time. Um, travel and convention, uh, twenty-five hundred dollars was budgeted, none has been spent so far, so you've got that in your budget. Um, other operating supplies, here's, still have three hundred and sixty-five out of five hundred dollars. And, um, grant match still have twelve thousand, five hundred dollars left. Um, out of that budget, nothing has been used so far, that, that amount was set, um, because that's what was used the year before for matching the AFID grants, on the other hand, it's, it's just for grant match, if there's anything else out there that you see that's a good grant match and something good for the community, you can use that. And that's where you're at so far.
Thank you, so that brings our grand total of available.
You got, uh, twenty-nine, eight ninety-five, your budget right now.
He spent five, two thirty.
It does. Thank you. Um.
And some of that rollover as well? Or is that?
It does not automatically rollover. There's only, you can ask for double the amount next year because you've got a project and it would just be taking from last year and asking for more. But no, that means that you were given the permission to use that much money this year, and if you didn't use it, then you can ask again next year.
So, I have a question about that, so, at least where I work, which is state agency too, like, they put a moratorium on our spending, like, somewhere in mid-March. So, like, can we really have till June thirtieth, or do we have till April, May?
You have till June, till June thirtieth. Uh, when you, it's supposed to be where, um, not only, uh, do you pay for it, but the service is rendered by that date. So it depends on what you're getting.
Yeah.
The twenty-nine, that's still, I take out the grant, so we're, uh, under that, that's correct. Twenty-nine is the total amount of money?
Twenty-nine, eight ninety-five is the total amount that you have left in your budget that is unspent or in unencumbered.
But still twelve of it for the grant?
It, it, that's just a budget line, it's, that's not already towards any grant.
Okay.
Yeah.
I thought it was.
No, that was twelve, twelve-five was, was used last year, but again, that was part of the budget request of this year as well to say, hey, let's, let's do that again if we find anything.
Just have to grant that part of it, too.
We still have that money for grant matching.
Correct.
Till June thirtieth.
Correct.
Somebody comes in June first.
Well, they have to go through the state process.
Yeah, it's gonna be.
They have to go through the state process.
Right.
And I think that grant, I've sent it to a couple of farmers and I've talked specifically to the one that we talked about last month, um, and he can't do it, but I sent it to a couple of others, but I think the window is like April to May. And then, the question is, will they come back with a decision before June thirtieth? And I don't know what that answer is.
But, uh, something like that is, that's easily justified to ask to carry forward. To say, hey, we would, or at least, uh, it's not like you, you lose the money, it's, it's there, say, hey, I want that again because we've got this.
Can we reallocate some of those funds within that account to serve as other?
Yes, now you can, I mean, it takes a budget amendment, which is nothing more than you saying, I would like to change this for that, and the bottom line is what's most important.
That's moving money from one line item to the other.
Right. You don't want to overspend in one, but on the other hand, you can think of it that you've got twenty-nine, eight ninety-five, it's unencumbered, and if you find a project that you would like to use that for, we can easily get a budget amendment to say, let's put it all towards that.
What is the scope of the APID grants? Is agricultural?
Some of them are economic development, not necessarily agricultural, some are, some are also some small businesses, right?
Some small businesses, I think they all had to do somehow with ag, but it, or food. It could be some kind of sales, it could have something to do with a farmer's market. It was, it had to pay for capital infra- infrastructure. And the more it helps a community, multiple farms or multiple vendors or multiple partnerships, the better. So it's not about usually just trying to help one business out so much as saying, this business is good for the community and it's partnered with this, this, and this, and therefore it's even better for our community.
Also, to think about, I think it's two different grants, it's like the infrastructure grant and then the standard APID grant, right?
I can't remember.
But both of them typically require a fifty-fifty match from the venue, but because we're in a food desert technically, uh, and we're in underserved county, it was a two-to-one match, so the state paid two parts to, to the county's one. So, you know, you can think of that twelve thousand, five hundred as thirty-seven.
I think so.
So.
Is that right?
Yeah. I think Governor Yonkin just said, uh, uh, new, just coming on a, a new infrastructure.
Yeah, there's more.
This money is, I mean, as a follow-up, this, this way, I think, hundreds of millions of dollars.
I'd, I'd like to make.
I'd like to. It's recent.
I was gonna say, I, 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 um, would like to recommend or, or make a motion that, that, um, we put some time on the agenda next, at the next session to bring forwards some proposals, right, and where, where we can spend this money, things we can do with it.
I know what you're talking about, yeah, I agree.
For an idea.
That there was a forestry one, and then there's a recreation, like a recreational thing that we, that we could do that, pop that.
So, can we, can, I'd like to make a motion that we get this on the agenda for next time to actually talk about specific, uh, opportunities.
You don't need a motion?
I don't, okay. Well, I don't need a motion, so please put it on the agenda.
Digging some more, I mean, this is just recent past couple.
I saw a news article on it.
Yeah.
Um, but I don't know any more than that. Um.
Well, digging into somebody can, I think it's weird, I think I heard a conversation, I asked them, so, how many benefits they were, I mean, candidates, they got a lot of that. Yeah, a lot of it was getting in the poll, it's.
It's, is.
Wanted to look at it more, 'cause I was, I saw that, I had read more on the business ready sites, stuff that's coming through.
Can, can you help us, uh, with, with information related to the APID grants, or where, where, can you recommend where we can read?
Sure, but there's a, they've got a great website, um, on VDAX, I think, um.
I can send those, I know where they are.
Yeah, okay, that'd be great, thank you.
In, in your treasurer's report, could you take a snippet of that and email it to the group?
Sure.
I would assume it has the designation of the accounts and stuff.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Alright, um, is that complete, Mr. Hodgins? Uh, moving on, next, the chairs report, thank you, the treasurer's report. Mr. Brown?
I have no, nothing to share, thank you all very much.
Hey, moving on, thank you. Uh, next is unfinished business, um, we'll start off with the, uh, paid EDA position and interim funding request, um, for that member. So, start off with that. So the other day, um, I was working with the HR manager here, and uh, we made a couple edits to the, uh, job, um, job description, sorry, and I sent that out to the group. Uh, did we have anything we liked on it, anything we wanted to add, anything we wanted to add? I believe it's this Monday, I'll present to the board supervisors and secretary, um, at least this time with a job description in hand. Uh, also some other metrics.
So, I have some comments of, of, uh, so, um, let's see, so, one of the things that, um, the RKG report mentioned was, uh, three positions, right, and, and so, so I found it on page A, talking about having an economic development director, talked about some, somebody who focused on marketing and focused on somebody who did real estate. And, um, I, I thought it might be helpful if, um, to, to, instead of calling this person based, based on the RKG report, instead of calling this person business development specialist, calling him economic development director, right, in the title of a director. And, um, and then, uh, the, the three primary functions that were recommended were, um, primary responsibilities being prospect recruitment, stakeholder coordination, and relationship development, and so I, I thought that would be helpful to actually list upfront. Right, as, as the primary, um, uh, responsibilities of this person. Um, there were some, and, and then, uh, it, uh, um, there's a lot going on here, right, and, and so, um, when I went through the list of all the things, there were some things that were, uh, really, uh, real estate analyst kind of things, or other things that were, um, uh, the, the marketing, uh, would apply more to the marketing folks and, uh, person. And then when I look at the, I mean, this is a lot of responsibility for somebody who's got five years' experience. And so, I, I think it might be helpful if we're really, if we're looking for somebody with like five years' experience to narrow the responsibilities that are asking them to prioritize. Think that would be helpful, and, um, and the way I would suggest narrowing it is to take out some of the items that are the analyst position and, and the marketing position, and just focus on core responsibilities.
Thank, thank you for those, those points, so two, two things, um, when I was working with Anita on this, um, we use the neighboring counties', uh, job description that they use. And then also in our HR department, there's a lot of blanked in, um, already, you know, from, nothing, let's just say zoning, you know, there's a zoning kind of thing, so she had blended the two, and we had taken out a lot and we put in some. Um, the other thing too is, I did say, hey, it's a little wordy, there's a lot going on there, however, they said, in the case of a, um, the ones you're terminating, but we, we need particular things in there, at least to hold the metrics. If we just had one line saying, market development, you know, do X, Y, Z, it, it doesn't leave a lot if we ever have to go back to the job description in case of termination. So that's not just to find all of the words, you know, in, in here, but.
Yeah, so, so, um, I'm, I'm trying to think, how to be helpful here, would, 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 would it, would it be helpful to have a discussion about narrowing the scope to just what we want the economic development director to do? So it, it's, it's a, it's a question, I, I don't know, I.
Yeah, me, Mr. Chairman, uh, I, I see what Anita's talking about, and I went through that, it kind of highlighted what I thought we definitely will want this person to do. A lot of the other stuff was, uh, it was, you know, uh, it, some of it was, uh, covered, I mean, it's previously covered, but what I'm saying is, I think it does need to be narrowed down, um, uh, into, to some bullets that will cover everything instead of three or four pages. I see your point, Nate.
So, and, and the, the last thing I'll, so I mean, I guess we need to do something with that, but the last thing was, it meant in the middle of the paragraph, in general description, it said, the ideal candidate will be ethical, respectful person, it ought to be, the, the candidate will be. It's not, uh, you know, having somebody, yeah, it's not ideal, it's a, it's a requirement.
Yeah. Just made note of that. So I think, um, we, let, let's go kind of paragraph by paragraph for shortly.
Yeah, yeah. It was like, would you like, I, I mean, I've, I've, I've written what I think, and would that be helpful to bounce off of?
I believe we had a comment up here.
No, I just agree, really, but, um, when you look at some of the issues, me, this is definitely an economic development director and, um, a business development specialist, like when I see business development specialist, I think that's just forty-five, so. And not this level of the responsibility, and to me, it was a whole office, or it was, but I know that we're starting.
Yeah.
Can you please move your mic to you, 'cause otherwise you are not gonna show up on the video at all. Sorry, I had a cold last week.
So, um, so going, uh, Mr. Rhodes, going from the top down, or as a group, let's talk about general description, 'cause that's how our HR software does everything.
Yep.
We do the description, and it kind of filters back down to the central functions. Um, what in here do we want to keep, do we want to get rid of, do we want to add?
So, my, I'll, I'll just put it out there and then everybody react to it, or if you don't like it, then that's fine too, I'm just trying to provide a, something to bounce off of. So I would, I would recommend changing the business specialist or business development specialist to economic, uh, development director. And, and I would start by listing the three primary functions, which are prospect, recruitment, stakeholder coordination, and relationship development. Right, and then everything else that follows in that paragraph is, is okay. Um, and then in terms of essential functions, I think number one.
To Mr. Rhodes, real quick, so we have responsible, professional, coordinate activities related to the business development expansion, recruitment, and retention. So, we basically take that out and say, prospects, stakeholders, and relationship.
So, I, I just, what, what I, what I focus on when I'm reading something, uh, I'm, I'm, what's, what's primary, what's not, right? And so if you say, the three primary things are, it's very clear, right, and, and if somebody stumbles on one of those, it's a problem. And so, um, so, so.
And then, um, as far as the essential function, and I would welcome us to, if we want to get on a, a call and kind of go, right, and make these changes and reset it back out, not to use all of our very valuable time on Wednesday evening.
You can't do that. That's against oil regulation.
Just send out an example of.
No, you can't do it on a call, discuss it on a call.
Oh, I have to make an email.
So, um, but I, I think if we go back and we just say, we want the three primary things listed up top, and then, and then we can let the whoever it is wrestle with it. Then, I, I would, uh, in my opinion, number one, under essential functions, that's a real estate analyst.
Right.
Um, and number two, I think, is marketing director.
What does the group think, uh, this is thrown out to the group, as far as the, our, we have in here the required and the preferred experience and education. Um, Mr. Hodgins, maybe you can give some feedback. So this looks a little, um, little strict in here, and this is, I guess, what the system requires.
Not about the system, but you're talking about that shape training experience, or you're saying?
Yes, we have, so as far as required, the four-year college, um, degree in business plan, uh, economics. Then we also have the preferred, the five years, can.
In, in my opinion, it, it's gonna take a pretty extraordinary young person to get all of this done, you know, you know, come here with five years' experience and it's gonna be, it's gonna be a pretty extraordinary person, I think.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, you know, yeah, I've seen it, it's done out before, uh, I, I understand some of the changes, but I'm the founder, he started the first stage, overall, we're not included. He was just thinking the salary was a little low, or what you guys mentioned, or what did.
I wasn't saying something.
He's just basically, he was depending, I don't think, yesterday, started having, maybe, a lot of fun. With, uh, if you try to get all of this, that part has been a tool for all, thanks a lot, Tom.
So, so, and the other, the other thing that I, is, is Jim was talking, right, is that we may find somebody who's like slowing down and who's on the back end of their career, who's got it going on, right? And if you, if we say we need five years of experience, I guarantee you that person didn't sign it up.
Why? And, and, and that's my hope, to find an individual maybe like that. He doesn't want to jet-set all over the world. And he wants to count. Um, okay, so.
Uh, one other one.
Yes.
Have you landed the count, sometimes after every stuff?
It's a weird question, do we have to make that?
I see you.
Do other counties, please, have to live in the county?
Yeah, probably the, kind of, straight. Directors are preferred.
Would the group like to make that a requirement?
No. No, if we get somebody who's good, I don't care where they are.
Uh, I think that would be dangerous, it may be already established in, you know, there or something.
I agree with you, I think, I'm the right candidate, I don't think who cares.
I would think if he or she is successful, they'd want to move here.
On that, and that I'm just very on double, uh, and if we don't like the county, we just have to get somebody, we're gonna wait everybody.
Um, I would, I would think that any mileage is for on the job. You know, they would have to get themselves to, and so, we're not gonna provide a vehicle, they'd have to use their own.
No, but I'm saying, no mileage for, and for, yeah, that's a question.
It, I mean, we, we can even make it that round one, the person, we ask the person to live in the county, prospective person. And if you feel like we're not getting the result.
I feel pretty strongly about that, I don't think it's a mistake.
Okay.
I don't know, I just want to see if you might move the, or if, 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 if. I think, uh, we need to think of the, if we share the county, we really put down this side.
So how about, would the group agree that we put a term in, prefer to reside in the county, but not the property?
I don't even think that has any faith to it, though I don't, I don't see the point, but if you want to.
It's not a requirement in the rest of the county.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to discourage anybody from applying, thinking that that, so that's a demerit of some way.
Okay, so we both, uh, you know, we do have the ability when we go through the job application process and interviews, that we can ask for they reside. Um, so the, the last thing is back to the schooling, uh, we want to take out, uh, add graduate from a four-year college, university, and/or, uh, uh, job experience.
It's already in there, that's the very last point in that section.
Okay, thank you, so last four words. Maybe we can even move that up a little bit higher. Um, then five years' experience. We want to have that in there. Appropriate experience. Alright. Well, I will make, uh, some changes.
You, you, you want me to finish running through the list, if, if, um, so, when, number three, I thought was real estate analyst, number four, I thought was real estate analyst. Um, number five, that's, uh, uh, economic directed, uh, um, the, yeah, that's the economic director, uh, six is marketing, seven, eight, nine, ten, and eleven, or I, I thought were the directors. So, of the eleven things that were listed, I thought five and seven through eleven. More applicable.
So, Mina, are you proposing that we change them, or are you just saying those are the categories that are certain?
So what I'm, what I'm suggesting is that we eliminate six, uh, four, three, two, and one. Um, based on, you know, RKG was saying, we, you do an economic development director, and then they were saying, you, you're gonna need somebody for marketing, you need somebody who is an analyst. And so based on that division of work, um, yeah, I, I was, I was making a recommendation that we eliminate, uh.
And I do think that we compare it back to the description. Any input, uh, and, and we can even change some of the words, so for instance, number one, um, it's actually kind of a repeat of the previous. Number one is essential function, number three, two.
So, uh, I, 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 I'm not having a reaction, um, but my recommendation, to be specific, would be to eliminate one, two, three, four, and six from, from the list of eleven.
Yeah, I mean, none of that.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I may, I, you want to eliminate completely? How about if we, I hate to say rewrite tonight, but how about we take some of, I mean, some of those things in what you want to eliminate might be put into, into the other items. You see what I'm saying?
Yes, I just, I just offered a place to start.
Combine them or do something, and I'm afraid we would eliminate too much if we don't leave.
I appreciate, I mean, I think that, I'm sorry, if, Mr. Chairman, if I may. I, I think that thinking of the, the, the overall economic development function for the county along the lines of what RKG proposed. Um, I think is, is a really helpful place to, to start from like a direction standpoint. I think that, you know, given the resources available, we, we may not be well-served to, to, to not include some of these ideas in this job description or in our baseline expectations for the economic development function. Um, just because we don't have the resources to hire the full complement of staff that are recommended. So, I mean, I think that we should, we should be clear-eyed, knowing that we're not going to get, you know, we're, we're not going to get everything that we could ever want and dream by having one person. But at the same time, I, I, I think that maybe by reordering these, not necessarily in one, two, and three, but maybe reorganizing the job description in terms of, um, looking at that RKG study and saying, you know, the, the, the big things that we want the economic development director to do is to cross, do the prospect recruitment, and then maybe detail a little bit of some of the ideas that are already in the document that Kenny prepared. Um, to say like, what, what elements of those nine, 10, 12 things are prospect recruitment? What are stakeholder, stakeholder coordination, and what are relationship development? Um, making sure that we're, we have in there the key things of representing King William at the regional target engine, industry conventions. I mean, some of that is going to be, you know, site tours and things like that, just because they're going to be the only person available to do it, I would imagine. But also in, in partnership with some of the county administration. But I, I don't know if, if that's like a helpful way to do it. Um, and you could even pull in some of, you know, what's in, written in the real estate associate, just because the person who's going to be there is probably going to have to do some of those things. You know, just to make sure that we're a viable place, even if we do hope in the future that we can have a full complement of staff to be able to, you know, really, really staff the economic development function.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Well, I do believe that I've taken a bunch of notes here. You can make some of these changes, shrink it down, less word. Take out the, um, the repeats, because there's a few of them. And I can get a, another completed version.
So, that's fine. And so I, I guess, sort of, um, we need to make this move. Do we need a motion on this? No? So, um, I, I'd like to suggest that we follow Gene's, uh, recommendation about increasing the salary, like the range of, of, you know, 80 to 120.
I mean, I, I would start maybe 60 or si- 60. Well, I thought it was low with, maybe 70 to, to, 70 or 100.
I know. Oh, oh, I said, I said, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, I thought it was low also, but I, I'm 70 to 100, or 70.
Could, could we?
Too much. 70 to 90? That's my thought.
Steve, I, I don't know if you have the, the pay grades of the county available to you, so I don't know if, if cha- changing this from a specialist to a director would bump this, that leveled the position up into a different pay range. But I think that we, we do want to keep it to whatever structure that this, that the county has. So I, I don't know if, if you have those available to you, like if.
Current pay grades for directors start them at about 72.
I, I mean, I think that that might be where we want this, this person to, to live, is in that, that pay range, rather than the, the specialist one.
Mr. Harwood. My biggest concern with all this is, is a great idea. But if we hire somebody 72 to $100,000 a year, do we really have enough to keep this person born and busy at pay points now? That's the question.
Well, maybe not at first, Robert Bruce, but I think you need to attract somebody in that salary range, and maybe the first year, he's going to start probably slow, but I, we're hoping that he will build and will, King William will start developing, and he will get busier and busier, is the way I see it. I don't think he'll go for gang bustings and.
I realize that, but obviously.
But to attract the type of person we want, I think we got to give him 70 plus.
And I do think, as I, my opinion here, I think by just getting a pool of applicants, you know, we're going to see the applications. We'll, we'll see kind of who we're getting, what we're getting. And then hopefully, we do, we don't want to forget that 30% of the salary roughly is in employee benefits. And then we also had to figure in, um, different expenses, you know, mileage, travel. So there, it was just, this position just wasn't the salary. There was other things budgeted into it. But I, I wouldn't, I, this position is just not a busy job. It's, it's, here's a problem, go fix it. Uh, to Mr. Ashcraft's point, this person worked 24 hours a day in this county for us. It could be an existing business, it could be a new business, it could be a trading event. I mean, they, they're on call 24/7. It might, might be one of the busier people within this building.
The, the risk is if we don't give this thing enough juice coming out of the chute, we stumble into it. And that's, 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 that's really not okay. So we need to make sure that this person has, has enough, I, I mean, we need to get somebody who's got some horsepower and who can self-direct and, you know, not, not require, you know, somebody holding their hands, saying do this and do that. I mean, they need to be self-directed, and they need to be a go-getter.
Yeah, and I, I would just, I would also just return back to the, to the RKG study. I mean, I think that there's a, there's a thousand things in there that this person can be working on, and they're not just discrete tasks that start and end. I mean, they're, they're like maintaining industry round tables. We've got creating an economic development fund to help expand businesses. I mean, there, there's work that's self-perpetuating in here that once we get started, it, it doesn't stop. And, I mean, you know, the report that we have says that we should be hiring three people, not just one. So, I mean, this person's going to have their work cut out for them on day one, especially, um, if we're able to kind of corral all of, you know, the things that we want and, and, you know, just establish a focus. I mean, I, I think that, you know, I think that there's more to do here than, than is reasonable to, to ask a person to do in the first five years, let alone the first one.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. So going back to my initial ask. When I based it on $55,000 salary, we came to one, 108.5, so just about 110. So if we're looking to give a $30,000 bump, we're now talking 138, 140,000 dollars.
So, so can't, can't, can't we short-circuit some of this discussion? If we agree that, that, that this person ought to be the economic development director, then the starting salary is 70 or something, right? And, and it, I, I mean, there's a bracket, and so if we agree that this person should be a director, then we just follow the county rules. Right now, self-love.
Right. So, Mr. Harwood, something, uh, sits here. We then need to come to the group because we did a motion about two months ago on the call of the 108.5. And we need to put it back out there now, under a new math calculation, to approve up to.
You're asking about this EDA's action or the board's action?
Uh, so on, on Monday evening, I'll go back to our board supervisors and, you know, job description and everything else. And I won't be asking for 108.5, we're anticipating hiring someone at $72,000.
Right. That's fine. That's just going to be, you just changed your request, but you've already fulfilled the motion to go to the board with, with the board, with the EDA had discussed.
But what's, what's changed, right? So if there wasn't a problem, and now there is, all we got to do is look at what's changed. What's changed is, we need a development director, not, if not an analyst or not a specialist. And, and therefore, to hire a development director, we start at $70,000.
I just didn't know if we need to put that on motion or put it back to the group.
Yeah, some, clarify something for myself here. Starting salary, 70,000, this 105, 100. You're saying that that person will actually be making the equivalent of 100,000 with the 30,000 in benefits in the county? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, let me do the math on this now.
All right, all right. I'm gonna, we go to the board for a $70,000 person, and the package is like every other package here in the county, right?
Right.
Okay.
The benefits and all.
So we need to be comparing apples to apples here. You know, I'm, I'm calling a $70,000 salary job, and then if he pushes it up, I know with benefits, but everybody gets those.
Right.
Okay. We, we got department head, G and N, that's right, right?
The directors.
The director, right. That's the department head's director, right? So.
They usually have a lot of staff. This is, I mean, right now, this is a salary discussion. What you're going to ask the board for, in the end, is a budget, for this, for this person and everything that they might require. And that's kind of what they were asking for last time, is, okay, put the whole package together. One, what are the, you know, we need a little bit more detail on what the description is, what are some metrics, and then, you know, the full cost.
Steve, on, from the cost perspective, I'd rather base the ask not on the minimum salary for the position, but on the maximum salary for the position, understanding that if somebody comes to us with, you know, you're not necessarily starting at the lower end of the range. If you really are doing comp theory, right, you're usually starting at the midpoint or above, if you get somebody who meets all of your required qualifications, right? So, I mean, like, if we could, like, base the budget ask on the top end of the budget, plus whatever we would need in salaries, and then add another 25% for incidentals. I mean, that's, that's the number that we go and ask for. And, and then that gives us wiggle room, based on whatever comp theory the county operates in. Because ultimately, it's y'all's call what this person is, is, is worth, based on the salary structure that the county has. So I want to make sure that we have the room to provide for that in its entirety, and that we're not stuck at a $70,000 position, just because that's all we budgeted for.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. So, so doing the math on the 70,000. So it's 106. So I did actually ask and hire, so last on my personal concerns.
Yeah, so, but what, what I heard Jay saying, I think is great advice, is that we should go in and ask for the, the, the median or even the high end, right? And, and we're, and we're not going in saying, and we need travel allowance, we just need that, 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 the salary, that, you know, $120,000 salary approved, right? So we can hire somebody. And then the travel and all that other stuff will work out, out of the, out of the EDA budget. I just, I just, right? I mean, we can, we can choose to say, yeah, we want you to go to this conference and, you know.
It's not a matter of what we pay, we can pay 70, we will pay first. The budget is going to fall to the county, 110,000. So we have our budget for 110,000. We always still pay 70, but we'll get the rest of the money and the budget cover the traveling expenses and the other stuff.
Okay, so that didn't communicate very well. So if.
If we will have more money than that, we won't have enough money.
So, but we're not, we're not paying the benefits. That comes out of the county.
There isn't going to be a salary that is coming from the EDA and the benefits that's coming from the county. It's all coming from the same place. I mean, if there, you, if this person works for the EDA, the EDA budget line would be salary, benefits for that, and all the other. And that would be appropriated and given to the EDA at the beginning of the year.
So if we run off of 70,000, uh, that'd be 21,000 in, uh, benefits and stuff. And then if we still ran with that $15,000, um, kind of annual budget, then we get to 106. So we're kind of, we're still below 110. Um, those numbers, sorry, I was coming back into a PowerPoint late, and I got the numbers wrong. But, so, yeah, if we're in that, that one, 110.
Correct. With board, the board's going to want, our board supervisor's going to want, hey, what's this person going to cost us?
Steve, what does it usually want? Do they want the salary, or do they want the salary plus benefits?
They want to know the bottom line. I mean, in this particular case, because it's a new position, they're kind of looking at everything. Their concern, like Mr. Pierceaw said, Mr. Moskowski, are you going to get somebody worth your while for this price? Do you want it to be more? So they're looking at salary to get the right person. But they also, when it comes time to the budget, it's the bottom line. Okay, with that person's, with that salary at this, 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 and this, okay, now here's the real ask.
Right, so if, if we're worried about stumbling, coming out of the chute, and we should, right, we need to get this right. We need to ask for enough money to, 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 to get the right level of horsepower. And 108, I'm, I'm worried doesn't get us there.
Okay, so what, what can the group agree on as a maximum salary at this position? Would we say 85,000?
I don't, I don't think we can make that. What's the range?
No, right.
No, 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 no. Their county hiring range is, right?
There's a, the director range is 72 to, I don't know what the high end is, 95, maybe.
Eighty-five, eighty. Okay, so we got 85,000. And we'll take 30%. So 25,5. Right, and then I had factored in here, uh, 10,000 miles of personal vehicle travel at 6250, is, I guess, the government right now.
What's that?
No, I'm just saying mileage. Where I came up with the budget of 15,000 was if they did 10,000 miles of their own personal vehicle travel. So we want to push that up, say 20,000 as an annual budget.
I know from experience, uh, the mileage thing can get a little funny with the state. When you leave home and drive, if he, if this person lives in Newport News, they leave home, they drive to King and Portis, they don't go to die. The mileage doesn't start until you get to your office, whatever. We did that, you know, our company did that. I'd leave King William Drive to Ashland. I didn't get paid until I got to Ashland.
And that's normal.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And they don't pay you to drive from here to go up to Venice eat lunch. So. The mileage thing, and some people take advantage of it, and if you know how to play it right, you can make big money out of it. I know. So for a budget on the mileage, 10 grand would give you how many miles? Was it 56 and a half?
15,000. Well, if you do 10,000 miles, then, uh, at 6250, 6,200. You can, you can burn up some miles, it's counting going back.
Yeah. So basically, you're looking at about 125, 120,000 dollars a year.
So, yeah, so if we did 20,000, then. So that would be miles plus. So it's one thirty, one thousand, sorry, one thirty thousand five hundred. And there's, and and we could be well under that too.
Right.
By getting. Yeah. And and we could be well under on the salary, the.
So so I'd I'd like to recommend that we go with a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. That's the ask.
That's covering everything.
Everything.
Benefits, mileage.
That shouldn't even become a worst case. I would think that we're covered at that.
Well, Strong, what do you think, man?
I don't know. Steve, Stephen, I have Stephen a question. These budgets every year, the board asks for each department to give them their budget. And they go in and department head acts number the dollars of salary. And then the staff salary, then the benefits are figured accordingly, and they're kind of added to.
Right.
The stats, uh, salary that the department has salary, then they come up with a total.
Right.
So if we go in and say salary, director, seventy-two to ninety-five. And we figure the budget on the high end, ninety-five, don't the rest of the numbers kind of fall in place with whatever the hospital?
Yes, there's gonna be a figure that's associated with. If that's the salary, then this is the insurance, this is the. Everything else is.
So we'll shoot for the high, ninety-five, and then the numbers sort of. And then that, then add to it whatever the numbers are for the benefits. And there's your budget. This is what we won't ask for, director.
That plus the travel expense.
Right, right. So that's what we need to think, right? Go through the numbers.
And I will check with, so when we do a a range. Okay, so when we go to director, it may, it may bump that number, but if our H R software allows us to actually plug in a number. Where do we want that number to start and where do we want it to stop?
That's just dictated by the director range.
That's what the director range is. However, when you make a budget request, you're not budgeting on a range, you're budgeting for a number. Jay's point, you were saying, need start at the higher end. Discussion is led, okay, median is a good starting point. So that's the, that's, that's where you come with your budget request.
Understood, but on the job.
But on the job description.
We really can't put ninety-five in there. Heck, if I applied, it knows.
You can say hiring range. But that's, that is the salary range that. Salary range also includes.
Yeah, okay, so, and and that's what.
They don't even know what a.
Yeah, why don't we get it approved and then we can figure out. Well, the the one reason I'm going through this, Mr. Rhodes, is that the last time I stood in front of the board, they gave me a punchline. And this was like, pretty much the first punchline. So this is our, I don't like, I prefer my time is valuable to keep going back to them with like changes and stuff.
So a hundred and thirty thousand is the request?
That's where I believe we're at right now.
Right. All in, all in, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
So, can we, can we think of, I think, but based on my recollection of last conversation, we're we're talking two things tonight. So the, we're gonna go back to the board on Monday and ask for effectively one quarter of that total budget amount. In the hopes that we can find a unicorn to stroll into this position starting on April first. So if they approve it and we can post it and we find somebody to do it, we want to be prepared to get that person working on April, on on four one, if we can. So what we're asking for is one-third of the hundred and thirty thousand, one-fourth, forgive me, of that a hundred and thirty thousand dollars from the capital fund. And then we would look to roll this a hundred and thirty thousand dollar request into our annual budget request that we'll put forward for twenty twenty-four. Is that, is that accurate? So we'd be asking effectively for thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars from the capital fund to jumpstart an economic development position if we're able to hire that person by four one. So that money's available and ready to go. And then in our budget request for next year, which I think is coming up on the agenda, we add on top of whatever we're gonna ask for, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to support this year round.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. So that, so you're basically, so thank you for saying that, that puts us all in perspective. So that's what I'll be essentially asking for, for, for.
Just to let you know as well that this is gonna have to be moved to the February twenty-seventh meeting. First, no way it's gonna make it on the thirteenth.
So it wasn't put on?
It is on it now, and I made the assumption that by nine A M tomorrow morning, you could get me the documentation that you want to go to the board, but with all these changes, I don't think you're gonna be able to do that. And we cannot put anything on the agenda that doesn't have written back up to it. So we'll have to move it to the twenty-seventh.
From what I was hearing from Steve is that all they care about is the bottom line. So can we give them two numbers, thirty-two, five, and one hundred and thirty thousand?
And it's the job description as it is right now so bad that it can't go forward without minor revisions later?
You can definitely revise it later, but what they were. Let me clarify, yeah, they do care mostly about the bottom line, but they had a discussion where they did ask Mr. Holdery to get more specific with the job description. And some metrics that could be met, used to hold this person accountable to whatever the E D A to do.
Could we give them the the job description as it's written, saying that we have some changes to make based on our conversation, but so that we can get it on the agenda, here it is? Then we can give them pages eleven and beyond of the R K G study, right? Saying that these are like the key initiatives that we're gonna be working on. That's what we're gonna be holding them to. Um, and then we give them the two numbers, and we can revise the job description when we get closer, and boom, we we can, we can have it up there on the thirteenth.
I agree with that. The only thing we, I think we need to change is the title then.
Yeah.
Should I do that right now?
Are you gonna be at that meeting?
I cannot.
Anyone would like to join me on Monday evening?
So, well, I just, of of all of us, Jay is asking, he doesn't, he's pretty good at it.
You're asking for a, on a, a budget amendment to get started now. That's one, one ask. And really, that's the only ask that you're making. However, they all know, and it's in the back of everyone's mind, that that is gonna be followed up with a budget request for next year. So they're gonna be thinking about both of those things for this one request.
And that's what's happening now in these meetings.
Right.
So that's like kind of the essence.
I would suggest. Yes, you can, you can make changes to this later, but if you're, you're making changes that are really different to the character of what is presented before them, then that's not something that they're gonna appreciate. So it's, yeah, you can change some wording around, but if you're taking away whole categories or big points, half the points, then.
So we have the cap, the capital improvement fund, which a hundred thousand roughly, so we can fund this position until we actually have a budget. Momentarily.
Yeah, then also our budget will be a hundred thirty seven.
And then we would no longer pull from.
Well, I I I agree, listen, it's more important to keep things moving. Some more change in the title and and ask for a hundred thirty. And and the matrix, it, right, if you take the last, they want fourth matrix, it's 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 the last. There, that, you just give them that.
In in this position, as we all know, it's gonna bring uh, much any attention to business development in the county. Help with the old businesses, or existing businesses, I'm sorry, and new businesses, and it'll help below that's one office staff. And I think there's probably some great candidates in the county now, really speak very highly of us. All right, moving on, uh, farmers market deputy, Mr. Williams. Thank you for that.
Yeah, it's fine. I talked to him as well, so he said the same thing to me. So I met with two, three, three other vendors that attended the summer market last year, and we started talking about a potential market this summer. We came around to every other Friday night. But we're working on location, so we assigned each of us to go speak to different uh, small businesses right around Central Garage and and to consider public venues as well. And so our next step is to meet back again and hopefully involve Chris, now that she's back. Just to have a county voice as part of the meetings as well. So that's what we're planning on doing in the second half of February.
I'm having a real hard time hearing folks. Could y'all pull your mics closer?
Miss Williams, the the question from Chris is, do you think that this group can be self-funded or they're gonna need budget line item?
So the goal is to be eventually self-funded, but probably, so there are some grants available as well. But probably they would need some an initial minor push.
If it's something that you want to be funding next year, yes.
I probably won't have it for you next time, though we're still working on site, and site is gonna determine costs. Because if we can identify a site that has a local small business that is willing to open their restrooms up, then it's gonna be pretty close to free. But if we have to rent porta potties, then it gets expensive. So site location is important.
Are you looking to start this in the spring through the summer, every other Friday?
May.
I would say spring, April to to August.
That's what the group agreed on.
Would this ever be, would the farmer's market ever become a function of like Parks and Rec?
It's different in every county, so it is part of Parks and Rec in New Kent, right?
Not sure, I know it's somewhere.
I believe it, yeah, um, Williamsburg is part of the city. Um, I'm not sure where Tappahannock is coming from. West Point is part of Johnny's City Services. And then there are some that are nonprofit. And then, um, there are some that are just kind of loose conglomerates. There's no real money coming in or going out. It's just a parking lot. So it really depends on the scale and how much involvement the county or city wants to have. And some of them pay for themselves and some don't. So some of them charge a booth fee every week for the vendors, some of them charge a one-time season fee. Some of them charge percent of sales. It really depends on how they structure it.
So, so. Great job, by the way, this last summer. If we can, I don't know, I mean, the venue's gotta be so tough, because the crowd was incredible. And we gone probably another two more. Who knows? We would have to pay wagons to get people in.
Was there any consideration on aillet, moving it to the aillet or aillet?
There was discussion of, I think, the county's lot near the fire department. So that's one of the sites that we were talking about, that we were talking about, a couple of others as well.
I think that was, that site was brought up, it's all, it's an active fire engine, T M S in and out, looking to become dangerous.
Talking about the actual lot roadway.
Yeah.
That's probably not us.
We probably, you know, last summer. We we consume.
Small portion.
And vendor space, I would assume, ten to fifteen acres is what we use. Clarification, uh, clarification, adoption of bylaws.
I mean, at your last meeting, you had questions about sections. Four point nine electronic meetings, that is straight out of county code or state code, you cannot change that. And section four point ten on attendance, that is again out of state code and is simply giving you information on why the board of supervisors can remove a member. Um, and then I added to section one point two, the purpose of the authorities to expand the non-residential tax space for the county to promote economic development, and then the rest was the same.
I'd like to make a motion to the fleet, thanks, this as written.
All in, we roll call or all in favor?
Uh, roll call.
Uh, roll call?
Mister Hardwick. Mister Robinson. Mister Pierce. Mister Holdery. Mister Campbell.
Hi.
Miss Williams.
Hi.
Mister Rhodes.
Yes.
Brown, Mister Brown.
Hi.
All right, thank you. Moving on to new business. F I twenty-four budget request. E D A board discussion. So we've already, we've already kind of had this discussion earlier, was gonna be more detailed. Do you have a presentation on line items?
No presentation, um, part of this budget request is going to be the, um, development director, as discussed, and associated charges. Just the follow-up to that is, you heard all the budget lines. So it's open to your discussion on how you would like to fill them out. Is it the same as last year? Or do you want more in travel, education? Professional services? Professional services, it's up to you.
Need the ability to bring that up on the screen, our current line. Stand there for visual purposes, would that help the group to layer eyes on it? And when is it, uh, listen, when you, you know, middle need to be a
The sooner the better, because we're putting all the numbers together right now. I think the, it's going to be presented, budget narrative is on the thirteenth of March, is that correct?
The proposed budget, yes, the thirteen, and then the public hearing of hundred twenty seven.
The, the budget's gonna be handed to the, the county administrators, recommended budget's gonna be given to the board on the thirteenth. Tentatively, that's the date of March. Outside agencies have not presented to the board, we still, we still have some groups that may come and talk to the board about their budget requests, but departments heads are already gone and constitutional officers. So we're a pretty good ways into it, so the sooner the better.
So, uh, uh, why, why can't we just take the thirty five, seven fifty that we asked for last time and add a hundred and thirty thousand and call it done?
Charlie, can you speak into the mic, please?
Thirty five seventy was the line item for professional services, so it's those five numbers added together, what's your request from last year?
Total request last year was fifty six to fifty. But twenty seven, five, I, or twenty five, seven fifty was for the RKG final phase. So it was really final phase plus ten thousand professional services, five thousand MPA, twenty five hundred travel, five hundred operating supplies, twelve, five for grant match. You can ask for the same fifty six, two fifty again, but there might be some question as to well, do you still need all of that money in professional services since you don't have the second phase of a plan that you're trying to go forward? So do you wanna cut that back, do you wanna keep it?
Otherwise, we got.
I think.
I ask the board again.
I think we should have something to take out if they push back. So if we were to stick with the, like, one eighty, whatever, I mean, we could always find something with a full-time staff person to spend on professional services, I would imagine, like Steve, what, we, we, we've gotta be able to start putting some, some plans together for for the extension of water sewer and all of that, right? So like, we could, we could say that we're gonna help the county in that effort. We're gonna retain legal counsel to help us raise a bond so that we can build new roads, we're gonna um, you know, we, we could do any number of different things with that twenty seven thousand dollars. Like, we wanna be able to be nimble so that we can solve the commerce part problem someday. Uh, I mean, I could think just in our conversations about seventeen things we could use that money for. Um, it's just a matter of being able to have the resources available when the opportunity is there. And I just assume if we have a full-time staff person, the opportunities will present themselves a lot quicker.
The basic line would be a hundred eighty two thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars.
Say, say again?
A hundred eighty two thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars for budget request. That's keeping the, like Jay was saying, if they come back and cut us, we always got a way of cutting stuff. Well, if you don't ask for, you ask for bottom line, if they come back, they'll cut it where we got.
Yeah, right, and, and it gives us some money to actually like do something, right, so.
Mr. Robinson, you were gonna, were you gonna ask earlier if we've ever used that money?
Yeah, before COVID, before COVID, we, we used to send representatives, there's a state economic development conference, conference every year, the EDP. Um, and then the Go Virginia partnership always had a state conference as well, so we would send people to both of those conferences. I remember, um, pre-COVID, I think Mr. Moran and blank, Brian, I'm just sorry, yeah, Mr. Hodges both went to both of those conferences. So, so we, we've done that like extensively in the past, I think there was even a conversation at one point about providing a scholarship to a member to go to a NDC conference to try to get an economic development certification. So it, it's really just a matter of when we can shake the members loose to, 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 to go and take advantage of some of those things. I think, you know, at different times, we've had folks who are working, some folks who are retired, so it's, having access to those things is great, it puts us on the map if we can get people to those conferences, especially the state ones. Because that's where these companies go, and they're looking for, they're looking for opportunities, so. Um, you know, we, we've gotta, I think, focus on that again now that, you know, COVID is, you know, behind us, I, I guess to to the extent that, you know, conferences are happening again. Um, but having the resources to do that, I think is essential, if we can find people who have the time to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. So if we were to put a number of fifty thousand on top of our hundred and thirty thousand passport, the PDA, that would put us the one eighty. So fifty thousand's more than we've used in the past, assuming we get the role, this new person will be kicking up things, we'll need some budgetary stuff. Is a group agreeing to throw that number, it's to, I like the symmetry to, um, to Charlie's man. Hundred eighty two, six fifty. It's, it's not just some big fat round number, I mean, there's some logic behind it, so I, I'd like to make a motion that we do a hundred eighty two, six fifty.
Actually, a hundred and eighty six, two fifty. Thirty plus what you had last year, it's, it would be one eighty six, two.
We need to justify every one of those figures, we just can't round them up and stuff, I, we gotta justify them, how we came up with the.
You have to categorize. You have to put them in a category.
Right, right.
So I'd like to make a motion for a hundred eighty six, two fifty.
Hundred and eighty six, two fifty. That's what you came up with, Charlie, when you had it all?
Well, I, I roughed it, she, she went over it.
Okay. That's with a hundred thirty thousand for the social, I mean, so, economic development, right, right.
Mr. Harden, so how does this, bring me back through the timeline again, we're throwing around a lot of numbers here. So March thirteenth is when the final has to get sent.
That is when the final is done. Mr. Ashcraft has already put together his recommendations and gives it to the board. Now, the board still has the responsibility, they can change any number until that budget gets passed. Um, but you want to have your budget request in and any justification you wanna have for it. Um, long before then, the sooner the better.
Maybe another time that we're gonna need. Why don't we roll with what we got? I mean, with what we got, it's good. And let's roll.
Because we need to, we do need to put it in the budget right now.
We, we, we gotta.
Everybody else put in their budget request back in November.
Of course categorized, and that's same as last year, right, other than adding.
Correct.
And this would cover, is what I have to do with Sarah, we needed help to people for the uh, farmers market, we got it covered too, so.
I, I just, I guess where my hesitation comes in is that, and it sounds like it needs to be submitted tonight, but, you know, we do get this this position approved, and this person's blocking on doors and they're making stuff happen. You know, I don't want them to ever say, we don't have the budget, or we can't make, I mean, within reason. I'm, I'm just saying, so it would be nice to know line by line.
We've got a capital fund, we, we can roll out.
Not easy.
Exactly.
Well, just as easily as asking for permission right now. In fact, you'll have an easier time if you have somebody that's got a real plan of, here's what I'm gonna do.
Let's go, I mean, we got, we got a motion, you got a second?
Let's take, let's take a roll call.
All right, I got one more question, bear with me, the thirty five, seven fifty for professional service, we can back that number up, right? Don't we have to, I mean, you just can't put thirty five from the last year, that was for part of the, uh, RKG.
Right.
Is professional service, we back, we can back, what is that number, what is that? What's that gonna be for?
Mr. Brown answers that question.
As long as we can back it, I'm with it, okay?
But what I would say is that we would utilize those, those resources to assist in, in any way that we can, the county's effort to extend water, sewer, and gas. That we would use those resources to assist in any way that we can, any effort or initiative that's put forward by our new EDA or economic development staff person. I would say we would use those resources in the same way that we would use the ten thousand dollars additional to the RKG study that we budgeted for and said, we're gonna have that in case we need it. Um, so it gives us the wiggle room and the resources to do what we need to do to move the ball up the hill.
Okay, I just wanna be able, when the supervisor asks, what is that number for, we can answer it, that's all. Thank you, Jay.
Uh, question before we vote, do we need to vote on asking for the hundred thirty out of capital funded?
For next year, or that'll be part of your, this request. And it'll be
So that's.
Up to us and, and the board to say how that's gonna be funded. Could very well be, that's the direction, recommendation is that it's funded out of the, um, infrastructure capital.
Okay.
For the first year, for how?
All right, so we have a motion and seconded. And it was
Uh, the motion is for a hundred and eighty six, two fifty. A hundred and thirty of that is salary and the rest is carrying last year's budget forward. And, and the budget request is gonna be made with the last four pages of the RKG study as the matrix, the performance matrix, and we're gonna change the title in, uh, on the job description to, to Economic Development Director, and we're gonna change the salary range to eighty, uh, a cap of eighty five. That's a motion.
This motion is just for a budget request of one eighty six, two fifty. That's what the motion is, that's on the floor.
All right, um. We get a, we need a vote on that?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson? Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Holderide?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Hi.
Ms. Williams? Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Hardwick? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
All right. Thank you everyone for that. Um, so moving on to, I think we have no one in the audience today. Um, citizens comment period went up to three minutes, up to three minutes, sorry. Of three minutes per individual or non-public hearing matters.
There's no one here.
Next meeting will be March eighth, uh, twenty twenty three. Uh, have a vote to adjourn.
I'm gonna make a motion.
What, we're starting a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second. Uh, roll call?
Mr. Pierce? Mr. Holderide?
Hi.
Mr. Campbell?
Hi.
Ms. Williams? Mr. Rhodes?
Yeah.
Mr. Hardwick? Mr. Robinson? Mr. Brown?
No.
The eyes have it.
You come on down yet, Jay?
Roberts rules is great, guys.
All right. We'll get better, Jay, thank you for, uh.
Forgive me for coughing into the microphone, I apologize.